Quiet, please. Good evening and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committee on Education, joined with the Committee on Education, joined with the Committee on Higher Ed. At this time, please silent all electronic devices. Please, at no time do not approach the D S. If you have any questions, please kindly raise your hand and one of us is Sergeant at Arms will kindly assist you. Thank you for your kind cooperation. Chairs, we're ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education. Welcome to our joint hearing with the Committee on Education chaired by Councilmember Rita Joseph. Today's oversight hearing is on streamlined college acceptance of New York City public high school graduates. We're going to be discussing a program that CUNY started last year and that has great potential both to serve our high school students better and to grow the enrollment at our CUNY institutions. Let me offer some background. At least 10 states and their public college systems have opened their doors to high school students in their states in a variety of ways. From the state of Idaho, which adopted the nation's first direct admissions program in 2015 by admitting all high school graduates to its public higher education institutions, to the very popular flagship University of Texas at Austin, which in this academic year automatically admitted the top 6% of graduating high school classes in Texas, to the new law signed last week by Wisconsin Governor Tony Evers legislating that the well-respected flagship University of Wisconsin at Madison must accept all Wisconsin high school students who finish in the top 5% of their graduating classes and that the other University of Wisconsin system colleges must admit students who finish in the top 10%. We are looking forward to conversing with a special guest at today's hearing, Fang Yang, the Associate Vice President for Strategic Enrollment Management at California State University Fresno. Vice President Yang's direct admission program remarkably starts with ninth graders. In our last legislative session, our committees examined some outstanding programs that can work only when CUNY and the DOE cooperate and collaborate. First, we looked at CUNY's array of college preparation initiatives for middle and high school students and how they have improved the status quo for everyone involved. Then, we looked at the New York State Seal of Bilinguality, which recognizes and appropriately rewards high school students' skills in world languages and at how those students can also be rewarded when they bring those skills to CUNY. I would add that since that hearing, we passed two resolutions related to the Seal of Bilinguality, and we are of course hopeful that the DOE and CUNY will continue collaborating for the Seal of Bilinguality to award students credits for this seal that they've earned. Today, we will examine one more joint effort between CUNY and the DOE, getting our high school students transitioned onto our CUNY community college campuses as they are getting ready to graduate and doing that as efficiently and effectively as possible. We are looking forward to hearing from our witnesses today the details of the current program and the plans for the future of that program. We are also interested in their response to Governor Hochul's proposal in her State of the State address to expand SUNY's current program of accepting students at SUNY colleges. The governor's proposed expansion would admit New York State students in the top 10% of their graduating classes automatically to four-year SUNY campuses. Now, I want to acknowledge my colleagues who have joined, who are present, Councilmembers Lewis, Narcisse, Hanks, Krishnan, Marte, Gutierrez, and Hanif. I would also like to thank Adam Starapoli, my Director of Legislation, my Chief of Staff, Jenna Klaus, Sahar Moazami, the Committee's Counsel, Regina Paul, the Committee's Policy Analyst, and Carolina Gill, the Committee's Principal Financial Analyst. I would now like to invite Chair Joseph to give her opening statement.
Thank you, Chair Dinowitz, and thank you for inviting the Committee on Education to join higher education for this very important hearing topic. I'm Rita Joseph, Chair of the Education Committee. Thank you to everyone who's planning to testify today. I'm very much looking forward to hearing your testimony. Chair Dinowitz covered a lot in his opening remarks, so I'll be brief. A college education prepares students both intellectually and socially for a thriving career and adult life. Nearly 60% of New York City public school graduates attend college choosing CUNY, and nearly 80% of first-time freshmen at CUNY are New York City public school graduates. So, close collaboration between New York City public schools and CUNY is essential to continued success of our students and our city. As a forever educator, I was thrilled when CUNY announced its automatic acceptance program because I've seen firsthand the obstacles students encounter in pursuit of their education. An automatic acceptance program that encourages students to continue their academic journey beyond high school has been long overdue for our students, and I look forward to exploring how New York City public schools and CUNY can enhance their collaboration to ensure a smooth transition from high school to college. I am particularly interested in learning more about the implementation of this year's Automatic Response Program and how it was communicated to New York City public school students, especially our most vulnerable student population. I'm also interested in learning about the future of CUNY's Automatic Acceptance Program and how it can expand to incorporate best practices from jurisdictions Councilmember Dinowitz mentioned earlier. Thank you to the committee's staff as well as my own staff, Chief of Staff Giovanni Pequant, Deputy Chief of Staff Joel Disuve, Chantal Saintfler, our Legislative Fellow. They put in, and thank you for the work they put in today's hearing. I would also like to acknowledge, okay, you've acknowledged everyone. Now pass it on to, now turn it over to Chair Dinowitz to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair Joseph. I do also want to acknowledge we've been joined remotely by Councilmembers Schulman and Gennaro. I'd like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person that you must fill out a witness slip, which is located at the desk of the Sergeant at Arms near the entrance of the room. Please fill out the slip even if you've already registered in advance that you will be testifying in person today. To allow as many people as possible to testify, testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you are testifying in person or on Zoom. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses who are here in person will testify before those who are signed into the Zoom webinar. Now, before turning to our witnesses from CUNY and the DOE, I would like to invite our guest, Vice President Yang, to offer his remarks. He is with us on Zoom all the way from Fresno. Welcome, Vice President Yang.
Good afternoon, colleagues, council members, chairs. It's a pleasure to join you for, on this very important meeting. My name is Fang Yang and I serve as the Associate Vice President for Strategic Enrollment at Fresno State. We're one of the 23 CSU campuses in the state of California. And back in the fall 2023, we started a program called Bulldog Bound. Bulldog Bound is a direct admission or guaranteed admission from high schools directly into Fresno State. And part of the program, these are the key features I just want to highlight, it is a program that requires a commitment from the university, Fresno State, the school districts, the students, and the parents. So, these are the four components. And we start the program enrolling students at earliest in the ninth grade, all the way through the 12th grade, and the students can sign up in any grade level, and they are following a specific curriculum depending on their grade level. What the program does is it provides a clear and tangible pathway to Fresno State. It does guarantee admission to Fresno State, but that is, for lack of a better word, the icing on the cake behind the program is really the activities and the programming and the building of the sense of belonging for these students. As early as 11th grade, we look at their, you know, whether they are on track for Fresno State, and we offer them a pre-admission package at that time, and then in the fall semester of the senior year, then they apply to Fresno State as a student, and they get automatically admitted. Then, as they sign up, as early in the ninth grade these students get into our database, we give them a Fresno State ID, the same ID that they will be utilizing when they apply to Fresno State. They will get an ID card, which provides them access to our library, it also provides them discounts to our sporting events as well. And then, along with the program, the students participate in many colleges and success preparation activities at their campus and also on our campus. They are, part of the program is that they build, they have campus experience at Fresno State. Along with them, along with activities for the students, we also provide parent engagement. Many of our students are first generation, so over 65%, 65% of our students will attend Fresno State are first generation, so we understand the need for the parents to be informed as well. We are informing the students about the things that we are teaching their students. And then, starting next year, we also are looking at dual enrollment, which will allow these students to take courses at Fresno State. Along with the program, the students who participate can also participate now, can also be eligible for our new Bulldog Scholarship as well. And what it allows us to do, what the program really allows to do, is really create a channel for collaboration between our Fresno State, all different entities at Fresno State, not just enrollment departments, but various departments at Fresno State, academic, to technology services, to enrollment management, but also it opens the door for our off-campus community stakeholders, like the school districts, to the high school counselors, all the way down to the students and the parents. So, that in a nutshell is a highlight of, you know, the key features of the Bulldog Bound program. Currently, we have 34 high school districts, 34 school districts that have assigned an MOU with Fresno State. That equates to a total of 81 high school students, 81 high schools. And as since, since August of 2023, we have 5,000 students sign up, and out of those 5,000, 47% are seniors and, you know, and all the way, and we have 18% juniors, 19% sophomores, 14% first-time freshman, for freshmen who have, who have signed up for the program. The impact of the programs, we could see right away, so there's some preliminary impact is that some school districts were used to rank in terms of feeder school for Fresno State as, as low as ninth or 10th. They are now number two in the number of students registered for Bulldog Bounds. So, those are more of our rural area schools, so that really definitely provide access to the students. Also, you know, are, we have over 1,700 students who have applied through Bulldog Bound, and we have an admission rate of 98% right now for these, for these students. So, those are preliminary report in terms of like just the return on the investment that we made with the program. We're also seeing a shift in the demographics of participants as well. Fresno State is, has a 60% of enrollment, Fresno State are Hispanic, but participants who have applied in the Bulldog Program, for example, Hispanic, our Hispanic population, it makes up 74% of our applicants in Bulldog Bound. So, definitely a shift as well in the demographics and access in, in those school districts. So, I will pause there. I think that I will open it up to questions if the committee or members have any questions at this time?
Yeah, just a few, and then if anyone else has questions, certainly go. I do want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmembers Felice and Sanchez. I'm interested to know some of the factors that, that led you to create this program in the first place and how this program, and why you started in ninth grade, why you're giving the IDs, the discounts, all of these decisions you're making and how they differ from some of the other models that exist throughout the country.
Great question, and I should have shared that at the beginning, but Fresno State is, is located right in the center of California. We are within 120-mile radius, the only four-year public accessible university. And so, most of the students that we serve in the four counties, which is Fresno, Kings, Madera, and Tulare Counties, these students are first generation, they are also low social economic, a form of low social, socioeconomic background, and many of them cannot leave the area. As a matter of fact, among the 23 campuses in the state of California, one of the, as us as one of the 23 CSU, we rank number two in terms of first-time freshmen who only apply to one of the CSU campuses. So, almost 13% of our first-time freshman applicants only apply to one CSU, and that's us. In terms of transfer applicants, we rank number one in the 23 campus with almost 45% of transfer students applying uniquely to just Fresno State. So, as you can see from this data is that most of the students in our region cannot leave or don't want to leave the region. 80% of the students who enrolled at Fresno State are from these four counties, and 87% of all enrollees at Fresno State are within the Central Valley, which is neighboring counties to, to, to these four counties. So, that's why we need to create a tangible pathway for these students because Fresno State is not, for many of our students, for most of us, Fresno State is the only four-year public option for them to achieve a bachelor's degree in the Central Valley.
For a lot of our students here in the city, CUNY is the option for them. And, and you already have some data associated with your program. You know, colleges across the country, including CUNY right here in New York City, are seeing a steep decline in enrollment. So far, do you have any solid data that indicates how this program, Bulldog Bound, has impacted enrollment challenges you, you were previously facing?
As, as of right, as of fall 2024, we're seeing a uptick in, first of all, in first-time freshmen for Fresno State. So, as I mentioned earlier, we have almost 1,800 applicants were in the Bulldog Bound program. We are up in application for fall 2024 by almost, for first-time freshmen, almost 7%. So, it's, it's a little early for us to, you know, conclude that Bulldog Bound generated the differences, but all I can see is from, you know, right now, it's just with the preliminary data is that most of the school districts who have been, who have joined Bulldog Bound has seen an uptick in the number of applicants from those high schools to Fresno State. So, we'll take a look, we'll run these numbers again in, in, in the summer to get a better idea, but as of right now, our first-time freshman class is looking very strong compared to last year.
And, and lastly, the biggest lesson you've learned from implementing this program so far?
Biggest lesson learned is that we have to make sure that everybody is, is aware of the program and that they're on board with the program. That's why we have an MOU with the school districts. None of these could happen without the support from leadership from the school districts. It's so important to get them on board. We, we have kickoff events at these school districts, and they, you know, they draw students and parents, their leaderships, their, their board members are there, their, their superintendents are there, their principals are there, their councils are there, and it really create that, that, that sense of change, that college-going culture among the parents and the students to, just to show them that, you know, Fresno State believes in them. That is one of the most, the biggest takeaway that, from this employment in the program. Many students already wrote themselves out of going to college, and when we go in there, we say that, you know what, you, you can go to college because we're going to put you in Bulldog Bound. We believe in you, we'll make sure that you're still on track, your, your counselors are going to put you on, keep you on track, even your superintendent is going to make sure that you stay on track, and that goes a long way.
And then, thank you so much. I mean, it sounds like a lot of collaboration is involved in this, and I assume that means data sharing, robust sharing of data between Fresno and all, all the high schools you're involved with.
That is accurate. Part of our MOU is data sharing, so that is a component. In California, we have a, the California College Guidance Initiative, which all school districts can be a part of at no cost to them, and they can upload all this student data, transcripts, and as a partner, we're able to see, we have access to the student information, so we don't have to ask for counselors to print transcripts and so forth. We can just actually have access to the student information.
Thank you so much for coming in today virtually to testify, and I look forward to hearing more about the impact of your program. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Now, in accordance with the rules of the council, I will administer the affirmation to witnesses from CUNY and the DOE. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council members' questions? Thank you. And as a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record. And we could begin with Ms. Sarmiento.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, I could hear me now. Renee Sarmiento, Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management, City University of New York. Good afternoon, Chair Dinowitz, Chair Joseph, and esteemed members of the Higher Education Committee and the Committee on Education. My name is Renee Sarmiento, and I am the Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management. I'm here to discuss recent initiatives to increase access and opportunity for our New York City public school graduates in higher education, the welcome letter, and our app Apply for Free campaign in the month of October, and to offer commentary regarding Governor Hochul's top 10% proposal. First, in the fall, CUNY Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez and New York City Public Schools Chancellor David Banks co-signed a personalized welcome letter to all New York City public school seniors who are on the path to graduate in 2024. The letter offered student admissions to the community colleges. They provided additional information about the 19 undergraduate college options and a QR code that led to the CUNY application. The power of these letters was that they were personalized and tailored to each student's high school academic profile and accomplishments to date. Equipping them with the valuable information to navigate their post-secondary planning process was very important. All students graduating from high school were offered admissions to one of seven community colleges, while students with higher GPAs were allowed and encouraged to apply to a CUNY four-year institution. Approximately 65 high school senior, 65,000, excuse me, high school seniors received this letter distributed in the first week of October and to kick off CUNY's, CUNY Month in October and coincide with the college application season. CUNY Month celebrates the university's vital role in, as a community anchor for the city, and CUNY Month showcased the university's breadth of academic, athletic career offerings through more than 100 in-person and virtual events through that month. Second, in partnership with Hess College Application Month, CUNY augmented its October outreach with an Apply for Free campaign that waived the $65 application fee. This applied to all New York City public school students for the entire month of October and then also extended to all New York State residents for the last two weeks in October. The initial outcomes for these fall initiatives saw New York City's students shine and nothing short of extraordinary. We are encouraged by the results of these fall activities, demonstrating a clear example of what's possible when we work together to address systemic barriers limiting access to higher education. During the month of October, CUNY received over 40,000 applications representing a 386% increase compared to the previous October. The increase of the New York City public schools' applications was 369%, and from non-New York City public high school students, the university experienced overall a 494% increase in applicants in the month of October compared to the, to the same time last year. More than 34,000 New York City public seniors received an automatic fee waiver when submitting a CUNY application that month. By simplifying the paperwork and facilitating communication, we've removed unnecessary hurdles for graduating seniors and reaffirm to students that higher education is attainable and that CUNY's doors is always open. As part of the CUNY welcome letter and CUNY Month initiatives, the university launched an extensive advertising enrollment campaign, a degree for every dream, across the entire tri-state area with print ads and digital ads all over the city. The campaigns featured more than 60 current students and alumni to highlight the university's unrivaled affordability and the vast range of academic programs. Coming out of this fiscal year, we will roll out a CUNY simplified application and a counselor corner that will provide student information about the CUNY application to our counselors at their fingertips. Our strategies, strategy is to reduce barriers for all students who plan to, for access to post-secondary education, and it continues past the fall application season into the spring, supporting college transitions through our college career and bridge program. The CUNY NYCPS partnership ensures that all 55,000 New York City public school graduates have a near-peer mentor to support them as they graduate high schools. Student receives weekly tailored messages personalized based on their post-secondary plan, the CUNY application, and financial assistance. The Bridge Program increases college enrollment for populations historically underrepresented in higher education. 82% of college-intending graduations served by the Bridge Program successfully enroll. Thirdly, lastly, the Governor, the Governor's Top 10 Proposal is another promising student, avenue for talented students, expanding CUNY and SUNY's automatic admissions pathways and will provide guaranteed admissions to high-level high school graduates, further bolstering the access to a quality, affordable education. While specific, while specifics need careful consideration, this proposal does deserve thorough exploration. However, these initiatives represent only one piece to the puzzle of providing a public, a first-rate public education for all regardless of their means or backgrounds. To truly expand for access in all and align CUNY's strategic roadmap to uplift New York, we must build on our existing endeavors and support pipelines to higher education. This necessitates utilizing resources that have been part, in large part, through the vision and commitment of the New York City Council. As CUNY continues to address affordability head-on, to strengthen pre-college and advising mentorships, to expand college-ready programs, and to reinvest in CUNY Reconnect, the New York City Public School-funded program created to address the challenges of adult learners in enrolling and completing a college credentials. With its inception in 2022, we've enrolled 14,000 students, surpassing its initial goal of 10,000, and thanks to the City Council, the program's renewal of its second year aims to strengthen the completion rates of these students. By working together and with your continued support, we can ensure that every New York City public school graduate can pursue its educational dreams. Streamlining application process, affordability initiatives, and targeted supports are key ingredients in making this vision a reality. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I'd also like to acknowledge Councilmember Stevens.
Ms. Harris.
Kristen Harris, New York City Public Schools Executive Director of College and Career Planning. Good afternoon, Chair Dinowitz, Chair Joseph, and members of the New York City Council, Higher Education, and Education Committees. My name is Kristen Harris. I am the Executive Director for College and Career Planning in the Office of Student Pathways at New York City Public Schools. On behalf of Chancellor Banks, thank you for the opportunity to testify today on our efforts to streamline New York City public school students' application process to CUNY. I am joined by my colleagues Melanie Mack, Senior Executive Director for the Office of Student Pathways, and John Quintanilla, Executive Director, Pathways Data. We are pleased to be here today to discuss our deep sense of urgency and commitment to strengthening our students' college and career pathways, and our partnership with CUNY supports that effort. I am deeply engaged, I've been deeply engaged in this field for over 20 years, and I've witnessed firsthand the challenges that students face in navigating the complex terrain of higher education and the vital role that a comprehensive approach ensuring high-quality college and career advising plays in supporting them through this journey. Before I go further, I want to thank both Chair Joseph and Chair Dinowitz for their commitment to the expansion of programs through removing barriers and increasing access to higher education for New York City youth. We welcome the chance to talk with you today about our programs, strategies, and continued partnership with the City Council. Chancellor Banks has set a bold North Star goal for New York City public schools to ensure each student graduate on a pathway to a rewarding career, long-term economic security, equipped to be a positive force for change. In setting this bold goal, Chair, Chancellor Banks, excuse me, has not shied away from the hard truths about our graduates' college and career readiness and New York City public school- and New York City Public Schools is deeply committed to improving upon our rates of 58% of seniors graduating college-ready, 59% of graduates transitioning to a post-secondary pathway, and 34% of graduates earning an associate's degree or higher within six years. We would like to share the actions we have taken over the past year to strengthen college and career pathways and to achieve better outcomes. The Office of Student Pathways, formalized in early 2022 under the leadership of Jade Greve, Chief of Student Pathways, works with schools, districts, higher education, and employer partners to achieve better outcomes. We do this by enacting four key strategies to increase student K-12 post-secondary success with a focus on long-term economic security. First, strengthening college career advising. Second, expanding high-quality college and career pathways and aligned internships and apprenticeships. Three, enhancing 21st century skills like financial literacy, digital fluency, and finally, extending early college credit and credential opportunities to provide more young people with a head start on their future after school. Under the leadership and vision of Chancellor Banks and Matos Rodriguez, there is now deeper alignment across institutional values and missions, and even stronger commitment to our shared student body, with 41% of our students transitioning to CUNY after graduation. New York City Public Schools' priority for college and career advising and awareness dovetails with CUNY's efforts to build seamless access and transition points while increasing the readiness of incoming students. Today, out of the 64,000 students that graduate annually from New York City Public Schools, roughly 25% of our students leave without a documented post-secondary plan, and about 35% say they wish they had more and better support in navigating their college and career options, based on our annual senior survey that we conduct. College and career advising is an essential lever to achieving successful post-secondary outcomes for students. Currently, too few students have the information and advising support required to explore and understand how to navigate college and career pathway options and develop a robust, high-quality personalized plan to pursue their desire after high school. In order for us to achieve our goal of every student graduating with a strong plan and a head start on their path, we must ensure that every student has access to high-quality college and career advisement by a knowledgeable adult that supports the development of a strong personalized plan that activates their passion and their purpose. In the over-two years since Chancellor Banks took office, we have taken significant strides toward addressing the gaps mentioned above by launching and expanding academic policy that sets a standard for individual advising support across a student's high school experience, increased higher education partnerships to increase our access to dual-credit courses and options with a focus on courses aligned to high-demand degree pathways. We convene a Pathways Advising Coalition, which is a broad-based group of organizational stakeholders across the New York City college and career landscape, now in its second year. Coalition goals include defining agreed definition of a high-quality standard for revising and aligned best practice for implementation, standard metrics for success, and essential training required for these individuals. We print a FAFSA guide, translated in all of our official DOE languages, and we distribute it to all our graduating seniors, both in English and in their home language. Access to a streamlined menu of high-quality digital platforms, such as Zello, Score, and Overgrad, to provide comprehensive data management of students' college and career exploration activities and post-secondary planning. These platforms expand the impact and reach of advising programs in our schools, and currently, we have 250 high schools that are currently onboard and accessing these tools. And finally, CUNY and SUNY Welcome Letter initiatives that, in support of New York State's College Application Month initiative in October, both letters featured affirming messages about students' ability to pursue higher education, confirmed that they had a place at CUNY and SUNY, and encouraged them to submit an application for free during the month of October. Our students face technical and systematic barriers through accessing college-ready coursework, completing the college post-secondary application process, seeking financial aid, and determining affordability, ultimately making an informed decision anchored in a sense of belongingness at their future college home. The Welcome Letter initiatives get to the heart of some of these technical and systematic barriers. The CUNY Welcome Letter initiative aims to further eliminate barriers in higher education and make applying to college more accessible to New York City Public School students. Building off our well-established jointly-funded fee waiver program, Chancellors Banks and Matos Rodriguez partnered to send a signed personalized welcome letter to over 60,000 graduates across our district. We saw a significant spike in submitted CUNY applications during this month. Over 36,000 applications were submitted, approximately three times the highest volume that we've seen historically. We also ran a parallel Welcome Letter campaign with SUNY. The scope and scale was similar, with the exception of the two-week window that SUNY opened at the end of October for the applications to be free for any student. In addition to the Welcome Letter program with CUNY, New York City Public Schools and CUNY really collaborated across all phases of the planning scope, drafting the language of the letter, the mode of delivery, and our communication strategy. We began this process in the spring of 2023 for our fall launch in the subsequent school year. New York City Public Schools provided translations for all the letters, which lived on the CUNY landing page. New York City Public Schools also trained and offered office hours for our school staff prior to the launch and during the month to support successful implementation. New York City Public Schools also successfully advocated for students to use their OSIS number in place of the traditional CUNY-generated fee waiver code during the weeks of the initiative, further streamlining the removal of the cost barrier to our students. We also collaborate in response to FAFSA delays, which is aligned to the application process to minimize the impact to students, and CUNY has officially extended their deadline to June 1st. The Office of Student Pathways invests approximately $16 million this year in schools directly through the College and Career Advising School Allocation Memo, or SAM. In order to increase staff capacity for delivery of quality college and career advising support across a student's high school experience, schools use these funds to supplement existing efforts to provide students with personalized college and career advising. Further, we believe all students should have access to ongoing personalized college and career advising to facilitate their progress through key awareness and planning experiences, to offer the relational support needed to explore and own a range of future possibilities, and to develop a strong personalized plan to pursue their desire after high school. To that end, we have curated a robust college and career advising training catalog with over 75 unique sessions totaling just under 95 hours of PD. Workshop facilitators include a wide range of content experts from the field, and at the end of school year '23, over 5,000 total school staff received training. Out of 531 high schools, we saw that 514, or 97%, have had at least one staff member trained. New York City Public Schools and CUNY has established a range of important equity-centered initiatives to strengthen advising and early college awareness opportunities for historically marginalized and underrepresented students. Those include, as mentioned earlier, our admissions fee waiver program. All financially eligible graduating students applying to CUNY receive an application fee waiver. Over 50,000 application waivers are distributed annually across all high schools. Waiver allocations are determined by enrollment of free and reduced-price lunch-eligible students, with CUNY and New York City Public Schools sharing the cost at $65 per waiver. In response to the requirements outlined in Local Law 18, New York City Public Schools has worked closely with MOPD to comply with the law while considering the implications of FERPA and limited availability of resource. To the date, the Special Education Office has taken multiple steps to comply, including the addition of parent letters to every transition age IEP, explaining the process of obtaining accommodations in college. Web updates have also been made by both MOPD and New York City Public Schools to provide additional guidance and support to students and families, and the expansion of the Community Engagement Manager existing TCAT staff position, expanding that job description to act as a student advocate who supports students and families directly with the college process. The short-term plan for the electronic data sharing system compliance is expected to be in place by the summer, and infrastructure development considerations are ongoing to respond to a long-term solution. Looking across the efforts of both New York City Public Schools and CUNY, we have laid a strong foundation of programs that enable many students to get an invaluable start to their post-secondary path. Through strong college and career advising, early college exposure, and removal of barriers when applying to college, we have learned together with our CUNY colleagues about readiness, transition, and persistence in college, and are clear that there is still more work to do. The road ahead with CUNY and our other higher education partners is to explore how we might push further to streamline admissions through a simplified application and the use of a student OSIS number in place of needing a CUNY application fee waiver code. We look forward to continuing to elevate the quality of the college and career pathways and programs. We are developing collaboratively with CUNY in pursuit of our central mission of ensuring all students' long-term college success and economic security. We anticipate this work will include strengthening our data infrastructure while broadening opportunities and programming specific to the needs of multilingual and immigrant students. As we continue to evaluate our current partnership and ways to grow to meet student needs, we want to build on the strong alignment partnership and collaborative leadership of our chancellors. We thank you for your strong support and interest, and look forward to your questions.
Thank you. I'd like to know, we've been joined by Councilmember Botcher. So I just want to go through a little bit of the timeline, just a few questions, and I'll turn it over to Chair Joseph. We'll go back and forth. I know some other councilmembers have questions. I think in both testimonies, it was talking about a personalized letter. Can we talk a little more about what you mean by personalized, customized, and tailored to each student's high school academic profile and accomplishments to date?
Melanie Mack, New York City Public Schools, thank you, Chair, for your question. This was a version one of this Welcome Letter to our students citywide. So I think that our CUNY partners and New York City Public Schools are clear that there's a long trajectory here in terms of how far we can go with personalization. I think that there were a few things that were really important this first go-around. We were looking at GPA. We were looking at, we, as New York City Public Schools, were looking at student data points to look at admissibility into different CUNY institutions. We looked at where there were thematic components to a student's high school experience, whether it was a CTE program or a career-connected learning program, and where there might be programs to uplift in the larger frame of you're going to college in service of your longer-term career, your longer-term passion and purpose, and what is it that's prompting you to consider post-secondary education? So those were a few of the things that we were looking at in terms of personalizing for this first go-around, and I would say that we have a lot of aspirations about how we would continue to iterate on that. And just uplifting that language access was a big part of that, too, and making sure that broadly available in our most widely spoken languages. I'll pass it to my CUNY colleagues to add on.
I believe we supplied you with copies of that.
Yeah, yes.
So you see them, right? So they're very bright, and they're very colorful. It has their name.
He used a lot of my blue ink, but it was fine.
You had to get the full effect, Chair Dinowitz. Not only did we do that, but we also sent notifications to the families. They're very important decision-makers in this process, so they got the email. They got the personalized letter where they could actually open it, and we had the opportunity of having both chancellors in a room where students got to open their personalized letter, many of which never thought that college was possible. And to be able to receive that and to know that it's as simple as a QR code has really kind of opened up what we feel pathways that wouldn't be there and get them to act earlier, which is a key initiative, instead of them waiting until the last minute to apply.
I mean, that sounds like a very nice moment. And I want to clarify, we were sent two letters. Are those the same two letters, one or the other, that a student would have received?
So let me clarify that based on their academic profile and their achievements to date, each student got one of those two letters. So one was accepting them to one of the seven community colleges, and the other one was accepting them to all of the comprehensive and four-year institutions. So depending on where they were academically at the moment, they received one of those two, those letters.
Right. So, I mean, this is a great, I think, idea, and really important, and I can't overstate the importance of that moment. A kid must have opened this and felt great. But the implementation of this sounds a little different than your description of it. The way you describe it sounds more like the way it should be. Looking at a student's profile, looking at their academic history, their interests, maybe where they live, what they want to do, their academic plan. But what actually, how it was implemented, sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, if their GPA is 70 or above, they receive one letter, and if their GPA is 69 or below, they receive a different letter.
Along with our colleagues at the New York City Public Schools, but this was our first iteration, and to be able to launch this, mail it, and to be able to activate this for this fall, that was our first iteration. I think that absolutely, based on students' interests, we could absolutely tailor the letter, but...
Just to be clear, I mean, that's...
That's the way it should be.
I mean, that's also what was testified. You know, it sounds like the idea is not matching up with the implementation of it, right? Is that accurate?
So I can add that in terms of process, it's good for me to clarify that there is, I think, a trajectory for our hopes here in terms of what the version one was, and then where we'll go forward with this. So we've looked at the states that you mentioned upfront, you know, the 20-odd states that have implemented similar programs collaboratively with CUNY. We've looked at versions of their letters. We've looked at the agreements between their school systems and their higher education. We've looked at test messaging. We tested out a lot of this language with our students to see what would resonate and feel real and affirming, and also substantive enough, given we knew there were limitations to how much personalization could go in a first letter. The letter that you have in front of you is pretty comparable to, or the two versions of the letter you have are pretty comparable to what you see in these other states that have. And so, longer term, where we would go with this is we would start to implement some of the differentiation that I was describing, right? Where if you are attending a future-ready NYC program, a career and technical education program, you can see some of the degree pathways, the career pathways, and what options you have. What you see in the example there is, you actually see a couple specific examples there. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately.
I'm happy to give you a copy.
That's okay. We have it here on the computer, but there are a couple specific examples of degree pathways, right? And we did some intentional messaging, knowing that these letters will not match every student's... And we did some intentional messaging, knowing that these letters will not match every student's passion, purpose, and, and, you know, pro-secondary pursuit that they're aiming for. However, we can start to narrate the importance of a degree connected to a career pathway, and I think that there's a long road we can travel. So for future iterations, getting to a deeper level of personalization, but what you're describing and what Vice Chancellor Sarmiento described was, was right in terms of our V1 that we, that we implemented this year.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds very V1, so you say version one.
Version one.
It sounds very version one, an important program with this great idea of tailoring things, and I don't know, DOE has tons of data that could be very easily used. So they get this letter, which in the future will be tailored, not really so tailored now, in the future is going to be tailored, and then it's automatic acceptance into the two-year colleges?
Yes.
Okay, all of them?
At any one they choose to apply to, they have seven choices.
So if I'm, if I'm a student with a 69 or below GPA, I get admission for Fall 2024 to one of seven two-year colleges?
Correct.
Only the two-year colleges here on the letter, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So they successfully complete high school, they can be automatically admitted to any of the seven community colleges.
And it's the same for if I have a 70 or above, and is it not the same for 70 or above?
So the 70 or above, and, and for some of our programs, there are limited seating for freshmen. But what we do, do in those cases is for students who didn't get their first choice, we route them to their second choice and work with them so that they do have the opportunity to pursue a bachelor's degree at a CUNY college.
Sorry, let me do again, 69 or below, they have guaranteed admission to a community college, but 70 or above, they don't have guaranteed admission to a?
They're guaranteed admission to a community, a senior college.
A senior college?
Yes, that, that, the two, the two letters, let me back up. The community college is a guaranteed acceptance upon completion of a high school diploma. The second one, same applies, and they will have an opportunity to apply to any one of those colleges and will have a seat at a CUNY college. I want to preface this by saying that there are some colleges whose freshman applicants far exceed what they're capable of holding on their campus. So we, that's why the language is you could apply to one of the senior colleges, and that there is a home for every student at CUNY.
But they have guaranteed admission to the four-year colleges?
They do.
Okay. I'm, I'm reading it, and I, well, college is a very stressful time. I was very fortunate in high school to have great college counselors, and it was still stressful, and then I get, imagine I get this letter, very excited to open that with the chancellor, and then I read, "Your hard work means that a four-year college may be a strong fit for you, and we encourage you to apply to a bachelor's program. Additionally, CUNY is thrilled to offer you admission to Fall 2024 to one of the seven two-year colleges," listed on the next page, "Just submit an application." And I'm reading the 70 or above, it just, I'm confused because it sounds like what you're telling me about guaranteed admission is great, and it just sounds like it doesn't match the letter that students, you know, around the city received. Am I reading, am I reading it wrong?
So, so the, there's a couple of intents in that, intents, intentions with the letter, right? One of them is to be able to know that they can attend a CUNY college, right? It would be irresponsible for us to be able to say they could be accepted at Baruch with an average of 70, and so that's not what it says in the language, right? So what we want to be able to say is you have a home at a CUNY institution, whether it be an undergrad college of, of, in which they, they can qualify for, or upon successful completion of a high school diploma, they could be accepted to the community colleges.
So, sorry, so they do or don't get automatic acceptance to a four-year institution?
They do, because when they apply, if they don't get into their first choice, because we're not in a position of overextending the campuses with their freshman, their freshman applicants.
Sure.
There are other institutions.
Yeah, I'm not asking about a specific four-year, I have a, a number listed here on, on, on the letter. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what it must be like for a kid who, you know, if you're telling me today, you can get into a four-year, we can't guarantee you which one, but you have a, a place at a four-year college, and the letter doesn't say that, it says you should apply, and there's a place for you to two-year college. And it's, I'm trying to figure out what, you know, this should be the clearest thing of all, we should be able to get all the information from this letter, and it's, I'm confused by even asking someone like really in charge of this stuff.
Well, I, I think it's important feedback, if you, I think it's important, important feedback that you're giving, but it also underscores all the supports that NYCPS and K-16 are doing in support of that, right? So it starts the conversation, and we're jointly holding a lot of events to be able to help students with their application and their financial aid. Many students will never receive a letter like this at all, and so to be able to have them know that it's a possibility at CUNY and that they could apply early will allow us to be able to outline some of the programs that they could have to, to graduate and go on to the workforce.
We appreciate the feedback, for sure. I, I, you know, I think we present all of this humbly. We think that the success that we saw in October was huge, and it's very heartening. And we also know that when it comes to the very stressful decision-making that comes with like, what, what am I doing after high school, that there's art and science, and there's large-scale messaging, and then there's, you know, very, very personalized, you know, decision-making that have financial decision-making, career, you know, decisions that, you know, the kind of supports that students will be looking for in the campus they ultimately attend, and so I think that there is a balance in how we share very affirming messages. We take all of the feedback on what version two will, will look like, but we're excited with the initial, you know, boost that we saw in student and, and family interest, based on the, which, which we largely attribute to the letters.
I want to turn it over to Chair Joseph for questioning.
Thank you, Chair Dinwiddie. In speaking, I wanted to know what programs are in place to help students navigate the college application and acceptance process across New York City Public Schools?
Thank you, Chair Joseph. We'll start by saying that this is, all, all three people here from New York City Public Schools have worked directly with students for many years, and so this comes from sort of life, life's work in terms of what we need to do at scale across the city and what we need to do in a way that respects very diverse learners across our schools. And so as, as Kristin shared in her testimony, there have been policy advancements in the, in recent years. So since COVID, we have implemented citywide policy around students receiving one-to-one advising, graduating with a plan, and that is data that we monitor across the, the city, that we share with district superintendents, that we share with schools, and that we hold as a really important progress point. We're, we're allocating the College and Career Advising SAM to schools. Now, schools select from a variety of ways to provide college and career advising to their schools. In some cases, they're, you know, hiring CBOs who are going to fill that, that niche. In some cases, they are funding a counselor or an advisor. In some cases, there is a team at the school who is supporting strong advising. We've released guidance that is specific to different populations of students, what are culturally responsive and linguistically responsive approaches to advising for our multilingual learners, for our newly arrived students, what are approaches for students with disabilities in the transition process. And so across policy, funding, I think, stronger progress monitoring and, and data monitoring across the system, and providing the, the training that Kristin outlined, where 97% of our high schools have somebody who has been trained. This year is an example, what that looks like is a person or multiple people at a high school participating in our college and career advising credential, and that's up to 20 hours of training topics. That's a really diverse offering, because we know our, our counselors, advisors, college and career staff in high schools are serving very diverse learners, and so we've tailored the, the professional learning credential to, to improve the supports. And what does financial advising, for example, look like for an undocumented student compared to what financial advising might look like for a student who has, you know, completed a CTE sequence and has a set of credits that they're carrying on into, you know, college, and they've already, you know, kind of starting with a head start on early college credits. And so I defer of Kristin, if there's others that you'd add.
The only thing I would add is specific to this initiative, we provided a menu of options for our counselors to engage with us directly. We provided info sessions, we had PD specific to how to support their students to identify CUNY campus appropriate for them, and we also have an inbox where we cert, we are constantly fielding messages and meeting and communicating directly to our CUNY partners if there's technical issues with just submitting the application, if there are questions about the platform, the, the application platform, or if they need help with just determining, I have a student that is interested in X, how do I identify a campus that's appropriate? They work with our team for that kind of coaching and professional development support and kind of customer service throughout the whole initiative, even now. We, we have office hours every Monday where folks know that they can come in and get their questions answered.
Parents who English is not their first language, where the child is the only English-speaking in the person, in the household, how do you navigate that space with the parents? Because I've said this to New York City Public Schools every single day, every chance I get, parents have to be part of this educational journey. It cannot be solely dependent on the child. For example, in my household, I would have been the one to read that college application, fill it out with my parents, because my grandparents sit and read or write English. So how do we close that gap, and how do we make sure that our English language learners or families, sometimes first-generation Americans, but you still have parents that do not speak, read or write English, how do we address that?
Thank you, Chair Joseph, that's really important. I'm a former ESL teacher, and so understanding the, the lift of meaning-making that this can put on a young person, to have to translate things when we're talking about college and career, like very, very life-changing, trajectory-changing information that's already pretty overwhelming and translating it to family, we don't take that for granted. Some of our colleagues across NYCPS have created these post-secondary glossaries that I think are in nine languages as a starting point, and is something that we're happy to share if you, if you haven't already seen them. I think that the post-secondary glossaries are an important way of breaking down a lot of the terminology that can be a barrier, a lot of the processes, a lot of the jargon in higher education and education for families. And I would say that the, the trainings that we've been, I think, doing for the past four years around culturally responsive and linguistically responsive advising, and particularly reaching out to some of our schools that have the largest population of multilingual learners and families, has been really important to, to recognize that there are culturally responsive practices that need to be at the center of the college and career advising approach, and that there needs to be language access at the, at the center of unpacking and navigating a really complex process.
How do you address parents that don't read and write their native language? We also have that, where parents don't read and write. So we have something we call bi-illiterate, where the parents don't read and write neither language even though they speak it. So how do you address those parents? If I didn't have Sylvia Brown in my corner when I was applying for college, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have probably, didn't want to go to college, but I had somebody. And what's the race, student ratio with the advisors that you have?
Can I, can I clarify, Chair Joseph, you asked for the ratio of...
You said you trained staffers to support the students, what's the student ratio?
Can you give us just one moment to look that up? So in what we publicly report out in the, in the annual Guidance Counselor Bill, the citywide ratio of all schools is one counselor to 272 students, and that's K-12. If we're looking at schools with high school grades, six to 12s, nine to 12s, et cetera, nine to 14s, et cetera, the ratio is one to 190, and that's for school counselors. What that does not count is the CBOs, the teachers, the other staff who are often trained to provide that, that is a, that ratio is one that we'd have to follow up on, given we do rely on the self-reported data from schools in terms of how they have used their resources, for example, from our College and Career Advising SAM, to appropriately staff. You know, in some cases, a high school may staff with a CBO that has, that has staff members who speak the primary languages, and that's a really important value add, and that they're electing to have that CBO do some of the services in lieu of a DOE staffer. And so that number of, kind of, when you look at the ecosystem and the, the different types of staff who support college and career planning, that we would have to follow up on in terms of what is the true ratio when you take into account the different CBO partners.
Thank you. In terms of FAFSA, what type of support do New York City Public Schools and CUNY, does it, is there a point where New York City Public School passes it on to CUNY to continue the process, and if so, walk me through it?
I'm going to pass to you, Kristin, to speak to what FAFSA support looks like in general, but also what it has looked like this year with the redesigned application.
So in general, again, we have a comprehensive set of professional development specific to the financial aid process, because it is, there are multiple phases of that, that in the best years, when we didn't have a streamlined application. This year, we know there are significant delays because of the late availability of the simplified FAFSA, and now there are technical glitches with different student income, income background. So we are working really diligently, again, that's why we have, every Monday morning, we are meeting regularly with our schools and our counselors to, to help them navigate that process. We have really close relationships with our CBO partners that deliver comprehensive professional development ongoing, because this is an ongoing process, and every phase of the financial aid process requires some, some skill building and some refresh, and so we do that across the school year. So it's, it's the 101 in the beginning of, of the school year, all the way through how they submit, verifying all of the technical difficulties that might happen with, with particular populations and financial backgrounds. So we, we lean on the PD, and we lean on the experts in the field that are, that are doing this work. We partner with HESK, the Higher Ed, Higher Education Services Corporation, so we're staying really close to what's happening at the state to provide information. We, they text students at the state level. We also have a texting campaign where we're texting students directly to give them updated information and also be, be able to, to help students when they are doing this at their schools. We also attend, if a school reaches out, we attend their, their FAFSA nights and, and support those evening programs when they are bringing families in to support that work. And we're leaning on the full ecosystem of folks that are, are supporting specifically now with all of the challenges with the new FAFSA, so New York City Public Library, all of our, our partners across the field, and CBOs, and other, other, other offices. So that's, that's how we're attacking it and, and trying to work in, in collaboration with our CUNY partners to ensure students have the resource, information, and the experts, so collaborating with their admissions and their financial aid officers to deliver completion events.
And for CUNY, the FAFSA delay has, has caused major concerns about all of the things that we just talked about to boost the application rate. Our concern is that if students don't know or get their award letter on time, they won't go anywhere. And so our admissions staff has been trained on the FAFSA and the TAB. We've launched and hired work-study students to be deployed throughout the city to offer financial aid assistance regardless of they're CUNY students, because we find that this is an imperative that needs to be addressed on the city level. The campuses have virtual events, in-person events, and that also, we also have over 200 bridge coaches working with the New York City Public School systems to be able to help, and they're trained on FAFSA's. We're currently looking at a particular program to provide more scaled services through the summer, it will be a very long summer, and we... It will be a very long summer, and we have been approached by some donors to be able to assist in our efforts. So I hope to be able to have something shortly to share.
Thank you. And what does community engagement look like in terms of once, to make sure parents and families and even outside entities know about the acceptance of CUNY, this new streamlined program?
Thank you for the question Chair. The Pathways Advising Coalition that Kristin started to name, it has a number of partners, some of which might be recognizable to you, the Council, Goddard Riverside, Options, Make the Road New York, I Mentor, College Bound Initiative. The list kind of goes on in terms of folks who are very steeped in our communities and also very steeped in this work of college, college and career success. And so across the ways that we, we of course communicate directly with school leaders and their identified teams, we of course communicate with districts and their family support liaisons citywide, so that anything, whether it comes to, you know, fee waivers, welcome letters, changes to FAFSA, there is a steady drip of communication. But I think that through the Pathways Advising Coalition and our communication with our, our community partners, we lean really heavily on how do we make sure that messages get shared through their platforms, whether their social media, whether it's their listservs, whether it's their, you know, presence in different community spaces. We are also doing some planning on how we, we look at communities where we need to be really thoughtful about what print materials need to be available at the entrance to subways, where do you print materials need to be available, in shelters to access advising resources and to access updates that are really important for the decisions 12th graders are making. So those are some of the examples of the ways that we, we aim to ensure that the message really is, you know, resonating with the help of some of our community partners who have, who occupy different places and spaces that, that we do.
Yeah, because normally, New York City Public Schools are very robust when they first start a program and then it drops off. I hope we keep the same robust engagement for years to come. What is the, what is, what was New York City Public Schools' involvement in creating the CUNY streamlined acceptance program? How involved were you guys?
Thank you. Kristin's going to walk through the planning process and then can pass to our CUNY partners.
Yep, okay. Thank you for the question. So we, like I said, we started very early on and we collaborated at every, at every stage, uplifting the things that we know to be true about our students, what we know is going to resonate in the messaging. So we collaborated with our CUNY partners from, from start to finish, and it hasn't finished yet, so we're still collaborating. Definitely gave advice and, and suggestions for what needed to be a part of the landing page and ensured that there were translated letters on the landing page to, to ensure that we, we were able to make it as accessible as possible. And wanted to share, we, we shared the data of like completion, just so we knew what, how, the progress we were making. And so at every stage, we were, we were synced. We were tuned in to what was happening in our progress and we made pivots. If, if schools didn't have the information they needed, we made sure that they were, they were able to get that. We also just had a kind of cascade of communication just on New York City Public School's side, making sure that from every level, our, our different central offices knew about this program, because many central offices support schools directly. So we wanted to make sure it was all one voice, everybody knew the same thing, and everybody was communicating the same goals and, and supports and resources that we had available. Again, we're making sure that our community partners understood what was going on, because not only are they in our schools, our students are going to after-school programs where they are also being supported through the financial aid and, and college application process. So we wanted to make sure that information was everywhere and our community partners were working in lockstep with us to ensure that students not only knew about it, but acted on this, this, this initiative. And again, we sent email, we sent email letters or messages to all of our families through our messenger system that our DIT department created. So those, those emails went directly to families in their language. We also text students multiple times to let them know this was going on. So making sure that we were canvassing, not just disseminating the information, but also making sure that they knew where to get the help and the resources for the technical, like execution of the application.
What if I don't have email? How else can I get that information?
So we, we made sure that our schools had, had all of that. So if they didn't get a letter, the letters got mailed to their house and schools got a copy of the letter. And so if they, they had, they disseminated those letters in school as well as those letters got to them at their home, at the address we had on file. So we wanted to make sure both they received it at their school and at their home.
What feedbacks are you getting from students who've been accepted into the program? What are the feedbacks? What recommendations are they giving? Are they giving any feedback?
Well, the application process is still going on and, and acceptance letters are still rolling out. Initially, our initial feedback has been very positive, just because it was like, they see me, I can apply. They felt very affirmed. And so anecdotally, we have really strong evidence that this was something that was very positive. Our schools and our school counselors and the folks that are supporting students with application completion, while it was intense, because it was all happening in the month of October, they had a, a wraparound kind of support to, to make it happen. And they, they definitely saw a difference in the kind of motivation of a student to complete the process, and we saw that in our numbers, right? We saw that in the, like, significant boost of applications submitted. We are still going to collect data. We have to wait until the, the end of this process, the end of the, the application acceptance process, and as students make decisions. And then when we are surveying through our senior survey, we'll get that data. And so we'll be able to have more formalized, but right now it's anecdotal. And it's been positive in the places where folks have said, okay, this would be better next time, we're taking all that into consideration.
Are you providing that space for them to give you-
Yes.
-feedback and surveys?
Yes. And so we're happy to share that once all of those, those formal processes have been concluded.
Okay, all right. How about for parents? We, we talked about parents. Is there workshops for them to come in and learn about the FAFSA process, the whole process? Are you allowing parents to come in in person? I don't have Zoom. How do you make it easier for me to have access to this information?
From our, thank you for the question. From our perspective in the Office of Student Pathways, we equip schools and districts with the resources so that they know that the FAFSA information they have in front of them as they are creating community events, whether that's, you know, pizza and FAFSA night as some schools do, or like an evening where they're, evening where they're, they're providing this sort of support directly to their communities. We want to ensure that they don't have the 2022 information, but they have the 2024 information. So our role is ensuring that we're interpreting what's coming from federal shifts to FAFSA, any state shifts to TAP, and that we're being the most credible messengers we can to schools so that they can then turnkey, because school staff have very big jobs. And so our, our role is to, we, we aim to make sure that the information is as up-to-date and as digestible as possible.
I will now pass it on. I'll come back again and I'll pass it on to my colleague, Councilmember Gutierrez. Floor is yours.
Thank you Chairs Joseph and Dinowitz, and thank you all for your testimony. I think it's so encouraging to hear the, you know, over 300% of students that applied. I think that's incredible. I think that's, congrats. Certainly a lot to improve, I think, on the communication of the letter, but I think it's wonderful. I have a couple of questions. One about the, the, one is about the letter. One is, were school advisors notified of the program? And then were, were staff and principals given a heads up when letters were going to go out to their students?
Thank you. This was an important part of the, the planning between NYCPS and CUNY. So the, the planning first with superintendents, we ensured superintendents were aware of this initiative and that it was coming and the potential impact for their districts. So we cascaded from superintendents to school leaders, to school counselors, to specific resource guides, to the info sessions that Kristin was describing that, you know, continue on a weekly basis. And so ensuring that message sort of from our district leaders to our practitioners, that was the intention.
That's great. So they knew when students were, they were anticipating. Great. Are you all, I was also encouraged by the testimony from the representative from Fresno, and I read in the committee report about how, you know, it's really the first of its kind that is creating pathways for high school freshmen. I'm curious if that is a similar model that we are looking at here, primarily because from what I understand, the letters were sent to students that were already on path to graduate, which is great. But I'm, I'm often concerned about the folks that, that are not, and, and I'm wondering if the incentive of college being a prospect four years from now serves as an incentive to, to be on track to graduate on time. So is that all something that you are looking at?
I can start. That's a wonderful question. It's one that we think about often, because out of our office, we start with the kindergarten 529 savings plan. Like, from the Office of Student Pathways, there's a lot of intentionality behind these particular initiatives. This CUNY welcome letter initiative was also happening at the same time as the SUNY welcome letter. So the intentionality is, of course, at a critical moment like 12th grade, we need to ensure the right message, you know, reaches a student with affirmation at the right time. We already have a, a lot of large-scale messaging about the 529 plan and are thinking about, like, as we continue to develop NYCPS communication, how are we thinking about all the key transitions and moments when a family can make a decision, transitioning into middle school, transitioning into high school, transitioning to high school and understanding the future-ready or career-connected learning programs and what type of early college opportunities they'll have through that program? So it is, it is, you know, this testimony is about the, the welcome letter specifically, but want to acknowledge and, and affirm that everything that you're naming in terms of like a longer trajectory and like what's the right message that should reach a student and family member at the, at the right time for the decisions they make about the future is very much a part of the, the communications planning we're doing as an office and, and look forward to continuing with CUNY and SUNY and our other higher ed partners.
Great. And I think just to uplift what Chair Joseph had mentioned about language access and just familiarizing families and parents and caregivers with the process, I did my own FAFSA. You know, it, there were a lot of errors and I think, but I still made it. But I think the, the, the mechanics of ensuring that families and caregivers from, you know, their ninth-grade students understand the application process, that understand that there potentially is a seat for them, and this is how you apply for financial aid, this is what TAP is. I, I think the more frequently that we do it, the more viable the prospect of college becomes to students. And again, maybe that serves as an incentive to get more students across that finish line. Can you, oh no, I have two questions. Can you share what data you have, CUNY, from New York City Public School students that enroll in CUNY? How many of them finish their programs? And I know there is, it's nuanced, because they transfer and there's two-years and four-year institutions, but if you can share what percentage of New York City Public graduates that enroll in CUNY ultimately complete their, their program? And if there are any other plans for data collection for this year, are you also looking at data of which students that got offered letters ultimately either apply or get accepted into SUNY? I'm very curious. I'm, we're both SUNY graduates and we're here for it, we're here for CUNY as well, but very encouraged by some of the conversations that are happening between CUNY and SUNY, particular BMCC and SUNY Albany this year. So just wondering if that's the data that you all will look to collect and if there are any other conversations about CUNY to SUNY? That's it. Thank you, guys.
We, I mean, we can, we can start and then pass to CUNY that in terms of New York City Public Schools' collaboration with SUNY, the parallel welcome letter initiative, we would, we would love to share more data on the impact of that as we go through this application cycle. And we're really interested to see that more of our students understand their options at SUNY and the opportunity programs, the, the career pathways. There's a lot of really aligned work between Chancellor Banks and Chancellor King. And so we invite the opportunity to share more and what that looks like. We're also working in closer partnership between our future-ready NYC schools and SUNY campuses that offer degree and career pathways that are very aligned and looking to the types of opportunities that'll provide students, you know, starting as early ninth grade with exploration opportunities at SUNY, all the way up to 11th and 12th grade college coursework.
Provided that 80% of our incoming freshmen are NYCPS, we could get the data for you. I would say the majority of our graduates are from the public school system, but when we report it out, it's an aggregate. So I, I note that and we'll get back to the committee with that data. But I did want to address your one question about students that are not just in high school, but in the earlier years, and have Dean Sunachan talk about some of the programs that start even as early as elementary school.
Oh, sure. I can touch briefly on that. The work that was highlighted at Fresno really emphasized the importance of building that sense of belonging early on for students and that sense of what's possible for them, which is just as important as sort of understanding the nuts and bolts of, of, of application or a financial aid application. And that's work that we've been deeply invested in for a long time. Our CUNY Explorers Program engages eighth graders on coming on to campus. All of our dual enrollment programs, which serve over 20,000 public school students annually, provide students with that college ID and that access to the library and the campus facilities, because we know that experience of becoming a college student is really core to the impact of these programs. We have a network of 20 early college high schools that deeply immerse high school students starting in ninth grade in that sense of, I'm a college student while I'm starting my high school career. So that's work that we're doing and have been doing for a long time across many, many programs, serving tens of thousands of students. I think Melanie spoke to many of the ways that we hope to continue to deepen that and think about the ways that we can expand that access. But I think I just wanted to emphasize that there are many students already being engaged in, starting in middle school, in addition to the, the work that was mentioned.
Thank you. I was going to touch on that, because I wanted to ask the question on your early college program. What does that student's acceptance letter look like? Because it's going to look different. They're already coming in with college credits. What does that look like in already having that experience and being on campus, interacting with college professors and all that? What does their acceptance letter look like?
Well, so for this year, the welcome letter looked like the two versions that you saw, right? And so it would be dependent on their GPA, what, what they were invited to apply to. There are some portion of those early college students annually who have up to an associate's degree and would be entering with that transfer status. That, that comes later in the application process, once they decide where they're applying to. We can definitely follow up with you on the, the statistics on the numbers of students that are applying with that transfer status annually.
Right, because that's also important data to capture as well, because you're starting early on in high school to give them that experience and expose them to higher education. And when they come to you, they're kind of prepared. So I would like to see what the transfer students, because then they become a transfer student, what does that look like? So that's another set of data that you can also use to uplift students. I'd like that, I'd like that. Chair Dinowitz.
Thank you Chair Joseph. Speaking of other types of schools, District 75 schools and charter schools, did they also receive this letter? Students, right, students in District 75 schools and students in charter schools.
Thank you for the question and while we made sure we were giving you the correct answer. So the students in District 75 who are operating under a standard assessment, received the letter. We have some students who have alternate assessment, who are not receiving that letter based on their, their IP, their learning needs, their transition plans. We did not disseminate the letter through charters, but Districts 1 to 32 and standard assessment students in District 75 all received one of the versions of the letter.
And so any, I just, any student with an IEP diploma, for example, would not have received the letter?
So the, the student cutoffs were based on GPA. And so in our D-75 and District 1 to 32 schools, students who, who potentially are receiving IEP diplomas- IEP diploma may have received the letter, the, if they were meeting the GPA criteria. And, and the reason for that is partly the timing. This was going out in, in the fall when a student is still completing their, their final year of high school. And there are students, as we're well aware as educators, that might still, there might still be a choice point whether they're graduating with a Regents diploma or, or if they, they are, are going to graduate with a different credential.
Right. I mean, that's sort of the differentiation I'm trying to get. Is it, it's Regents diploma?
So this was based on GPA because it's early enough in the school year. In, in thinking about where this letter is as a starting point and the national models that we looked at, a lot of the advice and the research we did pointed at looking at GPA as our initial most inclusive, most affirming message we can, we can share and being thoughtful about not, not closing doors unintentionally when a student's academic progress is still underway. They are still in high school. They still have a year ahead of them.
Right. And so just getting into, because I, I think making sure students have access, they know they have access, they have that sense of belonging is a really good value that I'm so pleased to hear you share and that are starting with these letters. Very important for so many of our, of our students. You have other programs like CUNY Unlimited, which are specifically tailored for students with intellectual disabilities. Are, is there any movement to get them personalized letters to see, to, to really see all the different programs that CUNY has, not just for students who have 70 or above, 69 or below, but recognizing the different diplomas that a student may leave high school with, the different credentials they may leave high school with?
It is our, our strong aspiration that these letters and knowing that these letters are one part of a comprehensive system of support that Kristin named, get as personalized as we can as we go through iterative cycles. Getting to a place that you're, you're speaking about where we can be really pointed about the resources for a student with intellectual disabilities and how they continue their post-secondary options would be where we would like to go in terms of that level of, of, of true personalization and access. I think that right now, the letter is, is one tier of communication. It's a message that's signed by both chancellors, which other, other school systems in other states had, had, had chosen a different approach or had sent a message from the state or a message from the university chancellor. We were very intentional about how do we send the most inclusive message? And so in, in thinking about that, there, there's, there's much farther down the road that we're looking forward to traveling, both to our council member, here's former point, a previous point about before 12th grade, what do messaging and communications look like and how do we continue to tailor? And right now, the, the letter is a companion to the set of advising resources and advising into different programs at CUNY, SUNY and higher education that we offer to schools.
Yeah, I think one of the great things you do in the letter is name ASAP, ACE, College Discovery, SEEK, these, these programs. And I know often, big bureaucracies often operate in silos. And there are significantly more programs that I think you can target specific populations with. And I, I think that's an important path to go down is not just naming the programs, which you do, and I think is important, but when you're tailoring this to really outline what programs are available for different students, based on demographics, based on academics, based on IEP status, you know, Local Law 18 of 2023, if I might add that in here. But one concern that I have is on the DOE side, we keep hearing about cuts, rounds of cuts to every agency, including the Department of Education. And if I'm not mistaken, the mayor implemented cuts to the Department of Education, which included after-school hours, per session hours, which would necessarily include counselors and college advisors. And how has, how have those cuts impacted our school's ability to provide guidance to our students through the college process, through the application process and everything else our wonderful college counselors do?
The resourcing for schools to do the work is of the utmost importance. We, we can speak to the, the work with the Office of Student Pathways and that the discretionary funding that we offer to schools specifically for college and career advising was not impacted by the PEG, nor were the suite of programs, the comprehensive college and career planning programs that Kristin described in testimony, were not impacted by the PEG.
I, I imagine, so your specific allocation of funds, but there are principals who choose to provide per session hours to, to their college advisors to stay after school outside of your allocated funding. Is that fair to say?
That would be fair to say.
So though, so you have no sense yet by feedback from teachers and principals, other faculty members, how the cuts have impacted, especially given the wonderful thing that this letter helped do, which was increase applications. We have more students applying, but seemingly less, fewer resources to help students, guide them through this process.
I, I can't from, from this moment describe the, the range of, of issues that schools are, may be experiencing with after-school and procession being curbed. We do have very, very active engagement with college and career staff and leaders across all of our high schools. And they will communicate with us their, their concerns and challenges. We have been very much in the throes of unpacking FAFSA and unpacking some of the, what is challenging about this particular college admissions cycle for students and families across the city. We will definitely be attentive to the ways that holistic budget cuts may be impacting this work for sure and would, would be happy to follow up.
I have found that if it's not in a spreadsheet when it comes to the DOE, the, the information doesn't exist. So I just want to confirm that when it was asked about recommendations from students, faculty, you take a senior survey every year and you take a teacher, a faculty survey every year? And these, the, the questions about the welcome letter and the college process specific to these new initiatives, will those be questions asked of the seniors graduating high school?
We, we incorporate topical programmatic initiatives every year in our senior survey. There's some questions we ask every year for years because we want to see how we're doing over time with students as they transition.
Of course, of course.
And we, of course, any, any, we'll have particular FAFSA questions because we had a redesigned FAFSA this year. We will have particular questions about the SUNY and the CUNY welcome letter. And so that, that survey is administered towards the end of the school year intentionally when students have made their decisions or are making their decisions. And then we'll, we review that data very closely over the summer to inform areas where we may need to pivot, do differently, make adjustments to program and supports for schools. And we look at the same reflections and self-assessments from schools.
And so, I mean, the, the survey, rightfully so, is similar year after year, but there will be questions added or they've already been added to, to the survey for the end of the year regarding things like the welcome letter and all of the, the new initiatives to do outreach to students. They, they will be added to that survey. So you do have not just anecdotal data from the students, but empirical data.
Our seniors will be asked about the CUNY and SUNY welcome letters in particular.
And what feedback do you receive, quantifiable data? What quantifiable data do you receive from faculty, including college counselors and, and teachers?
We work with schools on comprehensive career-connected pathways. They're implementing their college and career advising, their partnerships with employers, their partnership with higher education. So when we ask schools, high schools for feedback and when we ask them to survey and self-assess and share data, they are doing this in a comprehensive frame around the, the student pathways that incorporate students building real, relevant skills, building a strong career plan for the future, having a head start through early college credits and credentials, having strong advisement through their post-secondary decision. And so that is the context for the, the surveys that we, and the planning that we do with school staff. And it will get into the particulars of how, how schools are staffing, supporting, training and planning with the resources that they have.
I, I get concerned every time I hear, you know, things like conversations and anecdotal data because there are so many layers between a school counselor or a college counselor and a deputy chancellor. But right now, there are no plans to incorporate questions regarding the, the CUNY, New York City Public Schools alignment, no, no additional questions you plan on adding to the annual survey that's given to faculty each year?
We will be adding it to our Office of Student Pathways surveys, yes.
Office, okay.
Correct.
So, so you will have quantifiable data that you can then look at to improve, to improve this because that's, I think, what we, we all want.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. What, what I described to you was the quantifiable planning and self-assessment work we do held against schools' student outcomes data and their, the, the specific data points that we regularly share and some that is very like qualitative, that schools are best positioned to know and share. And so the CUNY and SUNY welcome letter feedback will be coming to us from school and district leaders, from students, and we look forward to taking all of that feedback into the next cycle.
And any, any, any reaction to SUNY, the top 10% of the schools, top 10% of students being admitted to the CUNY four years? What did I say? CUNY? SUNY four years. My apologies. Just one letter difference. It's very confusing. So reaction to the top 10% of students being admitted to the SUNY four years?
Thank you, Chair. We're, we're excited that Governor Hochul was sharing, sharing the initial outline of what this could look like across CUNY and SUNY. And we'll pass to CUNY colleagues in a moment. I think that what we're doing with the welcome letter initiative, as well as our future-ready NYC and our other comprehensive programs, is looking at, systemically, we're working on disrupting some very significant numbers of students well above and beyond our top 10% of students. And so we're incredibly excited to talk more about what that could look like and receive more guidance. And we've preemptively started to have discussions with CUNY and SUNY and also look at the data regarding our top 10% of students and what we need to know and understand about their post-secondary trajectories. There's a lot of opportunity that we're excited about with this program. And we're also going to, in parallel, continue the, the work that we presented today in terms of more and more inclusive messaging about post-secondary opportunity for students who, who, who have historically been underserved.
On the, on the CUNY side, see, I'm doing it now.
I'm sorry. I ruined it for everyone.
I was going to ask on the CUNY side. Don't worry. Well, CUNY, go ahead.
On the CUNY side, I just want to be able to say that, that in canvassing our colleges, all of them are very enthusiastic about this initiative of the top 10%. In addition, we have been in contact with SUNY regarding the logistics of this because there are, in the way that other states have done this, the systems have been set up to clearly identify that top 10%. So we're working with our SUNY partners in, in identifying how to be able to do this across those big five areas and working together to ensure that we get to them and that they have the, the letter and that they're qualified for it. It's just, they're, the other states have a system where they could clearly identify them and we want to be able to make sure that we're sending it to the right students.
I'm, sorry, let me, I don't know how to ask this. How do you not know who the top 10% in each school is?
I think that what, what we're referencing is that we don't offer, we don't have universal ranking across, across New York City Public High Schools. And John can, can add and correct me if, if I misspeak. And so there would be just a, a set of work to do to ensure that the criteria was, was fair and clear for all of our school leaders and, and that we were thinking about the, the equitable implementation of the plan. I would say, though, there, we, we are looking forward to getting more guidance from the state and, and being able to work with what we're hearing from Governor Hochul's team to, to move forward with a, a strong plan.
I'd, I'd be very surprised to hear that the DOE would not be able to get the top 10% of any piece of information, given that when we were teachers in public schools, we got data like that all the time within our schools. So I'd be very surprised to hear that, that, that there were challenges associated with getting that data. But maybe I'm missing something.
I wouldn't describe it as a challenge. I think that we're sharing in, in the weeds response that as this moves forward in implementation, we'd want to make sure that we have a very clear and fair interpretation of the top 10%, given the way grading policies and, and rank looks different in different high schools. But in terms of, the data challenge, I think is, is, is not the challenge, but fair and equitable implementation is what we're aimed at.
So at this point, you're just waiting for more guidance from the governor's office?
We're doing initial, we're doing initial data review. We are looking at exemplars from other, other states that have done this work as Vice-Chancellor Sarmiento referenced. We're doing some of the, the preliminary planning with SUNY and CUNY and we're excited because we're not starting from scratch. This, these are, this is, this is a plan that can fit within a pretty robust infrastructure of CUNY NYCPS partnership and, and not something that we're, we're starting from scratch in terms of the ways in which we've collaboratively planned access and success in initiatives.
We want to make sure we're equitable. CUNY, how is budget cut impacting some of the services that you provide, especially particularly to this program?
Particular to the application?
The system as a whole. You're going to get students, if you're getting cuts, professors are being cut, programs are being cut. How has the cuts impacted CUNY?
How much time do you have? No, just kidding. I think that for, for CUNY in general, and this particular program is very important to us, we have used our strategic funds allocated to us to be able to ensure that the colleges not only have the resources they need to identify it, but also the proper infrastructure in looking at and having the self-sustaining. I know for my offices, we are looking at artificial intelligence to be able to streamline some of our procedures and processes so that our recruiters, our financial aid advisors have the time to spend with their students. This FAFSA process, while touted as simplified, that first year will be very difficult. And so we've devoted resources out directly to the colleges to be able to help that and also looking at infrastructure to be able to help them from the future on. It, it will be challenging, but everyone that I've spoke to in leadership at the campuses are really devoted to making sure that we provide as much as we can for the students because we're moving out of, and we have moved out of the pandemic. And we're even seeing increases in our enrollment for this spring, the largest freshman class I've seen since I've been in, in CUNY. And so we want to be able to exercise that momentum and make sure that the students are getting the services they need.
How many of your, of your CUNY campuses are ADA accessible?
ADA accessible?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Do you get back to me?
Yes, yes.
Please do, because it's important. Because we do have our students with mobility issues. We want to make sure that they're also serviced as well, so.
We'll note it.
SUNY's not here to answer, but I would have the same question for SUNY. We want to make sure our, just as much as we fight for public schools to be accessible, we want to make sure our higher education institutions are also accessible to our New York City students. So that's important.
Yeah, it would be great if there were legislation that would make it easy for CUNY to know exactly how many students with disabilities were coming into their campus. If only, it does exist and it was supposed to be implemented last July. So Local Law 18 of 2023, but thank you for that question. Speaking of AI, great opportunity to use that to actually personalize the, the letters. And how do you feel about, do you feel like there's more competition with SUNY now with the governor's announcement of the top 10% of the students in GPAs? That CUNY is now in more competition with SUNY, that you might be losing students to other parts of the state or to the, the four campuses? Or to the four campuses in the city?
While I believe that the City University of New York has an exceptional opportunity for the students in New York City, we want our students to pursue higher education, whether that be CUNY or SUNY, which is why we're partnering with them, to make sure that everybody has a place in higher education. And so, do I see them as competition? No, I consider them a critical ally to making sure that all students have a post-secondary education experience.
Yeah, like at Binghamton. That's where I went. Good, turn it back to Chair Joseph.
So, I passed the resolution earlier this year asking for educators to be trained on AI. Is that happening in CUNY? The professors being trained? Because every time we think we know one AI, there's another one that comes out to counteract the first one.
Constantly changing.
Constantly. So I keep saying, you think ChatGPT, then you have Quillbot that can detect, that can give you a paper that you cannot detect AI in it, and it's growing. So how are we addressing that? Because the students are moving faster than you guys are. They're already ahead of it, and you think, what is it turning? That paper, there's a paper you submit? There's already an AI that can, that you can, they can use, so you not detect that the paper was created through AI. So they're moving fast. How fast are you keeping up?
So, we are part of an investment of $75 billion for artificial intelligence, in which our faculty are participating in. And, and we know the kids are ahead of us, right? But what we need to be able to do is train the faculty to be able to, to have them use it responsibly, and for us to be able to detect it. On the student-staff side, we need to get better about the paper processing, and the bureaucratic measures we put these students through, and artificial intelligence could help us do that. So I'm looking at it from my perspective as an opportunity to alleviate some of the burden on our staff of the manual processes that are happening, so that we could have a better experience for our students. And we look forward to the collaboration of the entire state on the artificial intelligence as it, as it pertains to education.
Absolutely. I've asked for guardrails to be put around so students can use it responsibly. It can be used responsibly.
Can.
Right? We can also create ways where, I know there, I know New York City Public School is using Amira for dyslexia and also for reading, but we can also use it, and I know through that you can create the pipeline, because we also have biases in all of these software. So our students have to be at the table to help create these softwares as well. So I think this is a great moment, because I had a student from CUNY that I did a roundtable during caucus, and he was like, Chair, I went into a classroom, and the kids were running circles around this teacher, because they didn't know, because now, when I talk to people, I'm like, so what are you using? Oh, Grammarly. I said, no, but they have Right Tune. They already created two more ahead of Grammarly. If you're using Midjourney, they already have Leonardo, so you're behind already. As they move, as they move, they move twice or three times the amount of AI, artificial intelligence software that's being out there to use. So even for note-taking, Sticky Note app is great for note-taking. Our student struggles with that, but with guardrails and safety around that. So, New York City Public Schools, I know you're currently using three, 350 schools, I believe, you're using Amira for reading and dyslexia? And how are you guys keeping up with the AI phenomenon?
That's right. I think I was on the hot seat in the fall, talking to you all and to Councilmember Gutierrez about this. It's, this is incredibly important. This is a defining moment in teaching and learning. And so, I mean, there's a, there's a couple of connections with CUNY. We're actually, we have the first state-certified data science program at Bushwick Leaders High School in partnership with LaGuardia Community College. They're developing the data science pathway. So when we think about our young people learning about machine learning and really being, gaining the skills, developing a portfolio that demonstrates an understanding of AI and its applications before they even leave high school, we are looking to cultivate more of these tech pathway programs through Future Ready NYC. So there is the aspect of this that is thinking about preparing students for the workforce in which they need to have both AI literacy, but we also need our students to be able to fundamentally be prepared to become an AI engineer, right? And understanding that software engineering is something that is quickly being kind of outpaced by a role like an AI engineer. For our staff, there is a fundamental AI literacy, you know, opportunity where we, I believe we shared the citywide training that we've continued to, we've continued to cultivate, the AI Policy Lab that's working with stakeholders across the city, from students and families to all of our closest partners, to understand what, what strong, responsible AI policy should look like. That will ultimately be open source and something that we can share as a national exemplar, and that's, that's work that's happening in real time this semester.
Absolutely. I'm waiting for New York City Public Schools to create the Digital Literacy Plan. There was one in place, I think you guys scratched it, but it's time, especially with what happened with the remote learning, and also during COVID. There was a lot of lessons learned, and this is an opportunity, again, and I'll keep saying that, New York City Public Schools have an opportunity to really reinvent the Digital Literacy Plan for New York City. So this is two decades of experience, and I'm also undercover techie, so this is a lot of, so I want to see the work and investment go into those areas, because even scientists are using AI just to track data, data collection, and how we use it in the future. Talk about Reconnect. You mentioned Reconnect earlier. Where do you do your recruitment? Is it just for students who left the system and came back, or are you in partnership with District 79 as well to do your recruitment?
In year one, it was to be able to look at students who started at CUNY and didn't finish. In year two, it was everyone. So whether or not they attended a CUNY institution or not, we have geomapping data that identifies students who want to pursue or complete their education. So we're focusing on that, and also working with nonprofits to be able to provide a service to their employees as well. And would love to be back, to be able to talk about CUNY Reconnect and some of the other initiatives to enhance retention, because it's not enough to just recruit them, but our obligation at CUNY is for them to be able to graduate and find, find jobs.
Absolutely. And whatever the barriers are, I know MetroCard has been a big, a big thing. Are you guys promoting Fairfares on campus for students to apply for Fairfare? The council funds this program where low-income students can apply, and their MetroCards are half price. So you should be promoting those things on campus. That's a barrier. Transportation is a huge barrier, and when I meet with students in college or in high, in college, especially in college, that's, that's a barrier. If we can remove that, that should be also a game changer in terms of how we retain our students.
Yeah, it's very much appreciated in our ASAP and ACE programs, the incentive they look forward to is their MetroCard, and so we know the value of, of that in transportation for our students. Absolutely.
Thank you, Chair Joseph. I'd like to thank the New York City Public Schools panel and CUNY panel for testifying today on this very, very important topic.
Thank you.
To those of you waiting to testify, I want to remind you, this is a hearing titled Streamline College Acceptance of New York City Public High School Graduates. And please be advised that no one's allowed to record themselves during the hearing. A recording of the hearing can be accessed through the city council's website. And a reminder, if you would like to testify in person, you can see the sergeant-at-arms by the back of the room and fill out a witness slip. Our first, for our first panel, I'd like to call up Sharon Hardy, Michael Shields, and Christopher Leon Johnson. It's Sharon Hardy, Michael Shields, Christopher Leon Johnson here. Thank you. Again, this is a hearing on streamlined college acceptance of New York City Public High School graduates, and I'd like to remind anyone testifying today that they cannot record themselves. A recording can be accessed through the city council website.
By the way, it's not live. I mean, this is, somebody needs to let you know it's not live on the website. That's, that's, that's kind of later. All right, so this is about streamlined applications. So I was a student of CUNY from 2009 to 2011. I was at Kingsborough Community College. So shout out to everybody that was at CUNY. It's a beautiful institution to be at. It's free. I was, since I'm poor, free, but usually it's cheaper than like SUNY and like NYU. But I'll say this right now, is CUNY need to be more transparent of, of like, what's the requirements, what's the grade, what's the grade requirements to get inside the, the senior colleges like Baruch and City Tech and like Hunter College? While if you have a bad score, they put you at, they put you into the little lower-tier colleges like Kingsborough and Queensborough Community College. What needs to happen more is, CUNY need to kill and eliminate the filing fees for everybody. You should be able to file for free. That's more of a cash grab. It does matter you paying, I think it's 90 bucks now, ex-community council, $90, $100, $70, $65. It's nothing but a, it's a ripoff. And the thing about CUNY more is, they need that, the books need to be more affordable. Why is a book cost $100? It's ridiculous. So to be, to be 100% about this stuff, when it comes to high school kids, they should, it should be more fair for them to, you know, apply fairly without paying a fee. And they should be more educated by CUNY, people in CUNY, of what's the grades you need to actually get in those colleges. Then, one more thing is, they need to stop this picking people because of their racial class or their economic class. It should be more of a fair system. If you have a high score, get in. If you have a, don't have a high score, you shouldn't get in. But all this like affirmative action type stuff, it should be happening in CUNY either. So, few more things, you know, this, and thing, but the accessibility, yeah, it should be more accessible. Like certain these colleges, they need to have ramps everywhere and more pole and railings and et cetera. So that's all I got to say. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else interested in test, or who signed up to testify in person? Okay, thank you. And we have on Zoom, Lorraine Cohen, followed by Paulette Henley. Healy. You may begin.
Unmuted. Okay. Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Lorraine Cohen. I'm a retired professor of sociology in the social science department at LaGuardia Community College. I taught there from 1993 to 2022. As such, I spent approximately 29 years of my career at CUNY. I also got my PhD at CUNY and my BA at SUNY. Among the many leadership roles that I played at the college, I was a department chair and chair of the LaGuardia chapter bar union, the professional staff congress. During my time at LaGuardia, I witnessed a dramatic decline in investment in public higher ed. Mayor Adams' recent budget cuts to community colleges are just one example. The governor's desire to bring more students to CUNY is a commendable plan, but we must be able to serve the students who do return. While the governor's plan focuses on automatic admissions for high-performing students, the reality is that most students who are admitted to CUNY need some form of remediation as they are not fully prepared to do college-level work. With insufficient funding from the city and state, we cannot hope to keep these students from dropping out. We know that money matters. ASAP students do well. They have free tuition, a laptop, money for transportation, and more educational advisement. This type of support is needed for students to excel. My testimony focuses on the way the university's administration's development and implementation of an algorithm or index, as it is called, raises issues regarding its efficacy placing students once admitted. I also argue that the concentration of power in the central CUNY administration has had adverse consequences. Remediation and ESL have always been hot-button issues. The policy of CUNY Central has been to marginalize the faculty that teach these courses and the students who require them. About eight years ago, the college replaced the ACT test with an algorithm for the purposes of placement of students in community and senior colleges. The algorithm was based on multiple measures in contrast to the ACT test. The change from using the ACT to an algorithm otherwise known as the index began as a top-down measure. The then VP at CUNY and his team designed and implemented these changes. Faculty and department chairs in the areas of developmental education and ESL were only given a cursory opportunity to comment or discuss their concerns. They had no say on the time of its rollout, its scope, or the methodology. There was no pilot program that would establish its superiority as an assessment and placement tool. Within a short time, the index was used for all applicants to CUNY. It was used for placement in senior community college, as well as placement in developmental courses.
Time has expired. Thank you. You can finish your thought.
Oh, dear. Okay, well, my thought was to demonstrate how the inflexibility of the central administration has hobbled students because they have been placed in wrong remedial courses and ESL. And my final sentence is that some students who need ESL language skill building are not identified by the algorithm. ESL is not treated as a legitimate program and is minimized at many campuses, when in fact, our students need language support. And in closing, the majority of the students that come to CUNY are not in the high, achieving a bracket. They're mainly, majority are students who need developmental education. This is something that should be recognized and supported strongly and not marginalized. And I hope that the chancellor really will talk to faculty who are experts in this area to consult with them and to visit them and get feedback, so that whatever the problems are with the implementation of this algorithm, they can be identified and resolved. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I know we also have your written testimony. Thank you for joining us today. Next, we'll hear from Paulette Healy. You may begin.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to testify. My name is Paulette Healy, and I am a District 75 parent, as well as being a disability advocate and community organizer. I thank Chair Joseph for asking the question about accessibility. I was pretty confident that there would not be any information shared today by the DOE or in terms of how many buildings are accessible, but when we're talking about the admissions process, the structure of the building itself is a huge challenge for our disability community. You know, they, they've made strides in terms of providing disability supports with, you know, within the campus itself, but we don't, as a public school system, teach our children to advocate for themselves when they're in higher learning scenarios. So they don't know what to ask for. They don't know to ask for accommodations. They don't know whether they need continued speech supports or organize, you know, executive functioning supports or counseling at this point. In a Hekking Jing report that was released recently, it shows that 90% of high school graduates that are identified as college-ready and are students with disabilities, less than 35% of them actually graduate within a four-year program compared to within a four-year program compared to the, um, 14% um, of, of their general education counterparts. So it's almost double, um, the number of students with disabilities that, that end up dropping out of, uh, college, um, in their first or second year. Um, and this is also including a third of students diagnosed with depression, whether they're diagnosed prior to going into higher learning or whether they're diagnosed while they are in college. So this is just, um, another lens that we ask, uh, those who are tasked to, um, to look at how admissions is, is administered, to look at our children with disabilities as desirable candidates. And, and provide not only, you know, um, easier access for admissions, but provide desirable programming, um, that students with disabilities can actually see themselves going into. Um, we are at an all-time high in terms of staffing shortages for related service providers. Why do we not have more programs, um, that allow, you know, uh, students to become speech pathologists, occupational therapists, um, school psychologists, social workers? Um, the, these are areas that are in high demand time and time again. Um, and we've already talked ad nauseam about the need for bilingual, uh, related service providers. So considering that, you know, the percentage of students that actually go into our CUNY and SUNY systems are identified as, um, either from immigrant families or multi-language learners, why not, you know, take that and synthesize them into going into areas of staffing shortages? I just have one more thought. Can I get one more minute?
Sure thing. Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, and I appreciate the, the speaker that you started with from, uh, the University of Fresno. But in New York City, we have PTEC programs that actually allow students to get early college credits, starting in the ninth grade, um, and extends, you know, um, the, the, um, accessibility for our students from nine to 12 to nine to 14. So having more PTEC programs with the appropriate, um, transitional supports to guide these students as they're thinking about how independently they can learn is a proven program that is not funded the way AP for all is funded. And unfortunately, with AP for all, those courses and credits don't translate even into our CUNY schools. So when we're talking about what programs to extend and what programs to invest in, uh, the PTEC program is a, is a, is a evidence-based program that works and provides long-term support for children who are going into post-secondary readiness. And there's, you know, um, I would like to highlight the Urban Assembly Schools that actually do this incredibly well. And I know Chair Joseph knows that I am very big on school visits. So Chair Dinowitz, if you want to come by and check out what Urban Assembly School for Emergency Medicine is doing with their PTEC funding, I would love to schedule a visit for you.
Happy to. Happy to go. Thank you so much for your testimony. Is there anyone else on Zoom who'd like to testify? Thank you. And I want to give a special thank you to Chloe Rivera, who's, uh, on Zoom managing lots of things. Um, I'd like to thank CUNY and New York City Public Schools for testifying today and everyone who testified today. Um, you know, our, our students in our public schools deserve the best. And sometimes that just means CUNY and the DOE talking to one another and providing opportunities for them. It's also very clear from the testimony today that there is a long way to go in making sure this great idea becomes a robust program that truly supports our students in their goal in getting into and graduating from college. Uh, want to close this hearing out. Thank you all very much.